Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, September 22, 2020. Have the invocation.
Mr. Darby.
By Mr. Jeff Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Timothy Larkin. Please stand.
All right, Mr. Darby, you're up.
Ladies, Father, we're thankful for this state that you've allowed us to see. We thank you for rest on last night. We thank you, Lord God, for your goodness. We thank you for your greatness. We thank you, Lord God, for your benefits that you even loaded us with. We thank you, Father God, for this city. We thank you for this state. We thank you for this nation. We pray, Father God, for those who serve this nation. We thank you for every public body that served the people of this city and of other cities and of this nation. We pray, oh, Father God, that you would direct our steps, Lord, that we may walk before you and do the things that you have called us to do. We pray, oh, Father God, for those who are hurting, those who have lost loved ones and have lost lots of things due to storms and fire and all the disasters across the nation. Father, we know that you are great. We know that your grace is sufficient. We pray, Father God, in the name of Jesus, that we turn to you and that we seek your face and, Lord, come to know what you have in store for us. For you are good and you are great, and we bless your holy name. It's in the name of Christ Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever being just as for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin, absent. Mr. Darby. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harb.
Here.
Announcement, please.
Bossier City Council meetings will still be streamed live at our website, boziercity.org, under City Council section and Southern Link Channel 12. In accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 42:19 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet core requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to the meeting, they can email their comments to the cityclerk@boziercity.org prior to the meeting, and those comments will be read into record. We will also set aside some time at the very beginning of the council meeting to allow for a public comment on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You may call 318-549-4595 at this time to make your comments, and you will be placed on speakerphone. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak. I'm watching it on the thing.
All right, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 15, 2020 special meeting in dispense with the reading.
In September.
And.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was kind of reading backwards.
Okay.
Sometimes, you know.
I'm sorry.
And also approve the minutes from the regular meeting, September 1, 2020.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Approve the, well, wait a minute, we've got one add-on, please.
No, sir, we'll just add it. We can just call him up during ceremonial matters. He doesn't actually have to be.
No, I was thinking of the new business.
Oh, no, sir, that's, you do, we'll do that when we get to that.
Okay, you'll just, all right, when we get to it.
Yes, sir.
All right, good. All right, so we have.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I forgot. I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Both agendas, by the way, which were read, so. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right. We have a guest, Mr. Chris Eberson here today to bring us up to date on the downtown hospital groundbreaking. Welcome, sir. If you could, please take your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, Chris Elberson, and my address is 5925 Line Avenue, Suite 3, Shreveport. And I'm part of the architecture team working on the project, and the project, as you know, has kind of been delayed off and on. The most recent delays were associated with their concerns over COVID, but I'm happy to report that they plan on breaking ground within 30 to 60 days. They're currently finalizing their financing right now and some operating agreements. And I brought along a few photos and renderings and drawings just to update you all on where we ended up with the project. I believe we had shared with this group previously some initial concepts, and this is just the final rendition of the project. So, as you can see, the project faces Coleman Avenue, and then they're currently reserving space around the building for future phases. You can see a clinic expansion and then a surgery expansion on the side closer to the tracks back there. There's also, I think there's, I can't read that, it's four point some odd acres between the hospital and Bearcat Drive that they're reserving for some other uses, and one of the ideas is a hotel and another is a rehab hospital. You can flip if you don't mind, thank you. And then these are, these are just various images. This is the front of the building. Now, the view of a drop-off for patients in the front. This image really shows this building in relation to the site and the tracks behind it. Another angle. And this is a floor plan that just indicates the different uses in the building. There's a central lobby, there's a surgery component on the right-hand side, and then there's clinic space and imaging on the left. I believe that's, that's it. So, if you all have any questions, happy to answer, if I can. If not, we hope to be breaking ground 30 to 60 days.
Any questions from the council?
No, sir, I appreciate you coming, and that's the first pictures that I've seen of it, you know, so I live in my head now.
Yeah, it's an exciting project.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. All right, committee reports, Ms. Fernandez with the monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, counsel. I've distributed the financial report for August 2020. You'll see on page one, we're at 108% of revenue by fund. For the sales tax portion that goes to the general fund, we're at 104%. Page two, our expenses by fund, and we're at 93%. Page three is our sales tax. Year-to-date, we're 0.4% better than prior year. However, if we back out the 2.4 in audit collections, we would be down 6.7%. Page four is our manning report. We're at 667 employees compared to last month's 674, and we're 31 below budget. Finally, page five is our water and sewer report. For the month of August, we're at 714%. Year-to-date, we're at 115% to budget, or, I'm sorry, 155% to budget, we're at 119%, and the rolling 12 months, we're at 147%. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Oh, by the way, I want to take the opportunity, if you wouldn't mind, I'll let you have the floor to recognize Ms. Glorioso and Molly. If you could, please tell the public, the council.
The second round for the CARES Act funds that we could apply for opened on September 14, and Ms. Glorioso came up here at 6:40 in the morning, a Saturday morning, and got our application in as quickly as possible because we were told first come, first served, and we have been approved for an additional 1.5 million. Thanks to my, my controller, Molly Howken. She does a great job, and she gathered all the data for us. And we're actually ready for round three. They opened the portal October 1, and we'll submit for that.
I love it. Good deal. Fantastic work, we appreciate it very much. And by we, I mean the citizenry, the taxpayers, the city council, everyone. All right, next, Mr. Roshenbach, the city engineer with the monthly project report.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
This is kind of a continuation from last month. We'll be doing these monthly, give you a little update of all the various things we have going on in, in the engineering department. Not on the list, but should go as probably my most exciting thing that happened over the last month is the hire of Mr. Clinton Patrick, who's sitting here, Clinton. Clinton is serving as the assistant city engineer for us and has really done a lot of work in helping me move some of the initiatives we have going on in the engineering department. So, be looking to see a lot of him in the near future. You guys have seen this slide before, we've got over $150 million in design and construction projects ongoing in the engineering department. $82 million currently under construction. Six projects are in the design or bid phase. I've got bid openings today on some of those. 26 projects under construction and seven subdivisions entering the construction phase. Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way, Phase 1, that's starting to take shape. We're showing them behind schedule, and as, if you recall the way I've done this, this is all based on completed and stored materials to date. So, I just take that over their contract price and then look at their contract time and compare the two. So, it's as, it's as empirical as I can get, but there's probably some subjectivity to the schedule. They're making good progress out there. We've been out resolving a number of various issues with the businesses along that route to make sure when this thing opens, everybody's happy. Swan Lake Road, coming along nice. I know many of y'all go up and down through there. They are ahead of schedule. It's a little misleading in that the construction time on this project is based on working days and not calendar days. So, with it raining seemingly every day, you know, there's not a lot of working days, but they seem to be making a lot of hay out there on that project, it's going well. We just reviewed a pay application and submitted that. So, hopefully, certainly by the end of the year, they will be done with that. Innovation Drive, Phase 2. We're showing them a little behind here again. This is based on progress, pay applications and things of that nature. I talked to the contractor today. I'm pushing for a November 6 opening date, and of course, with the caveat of weather, that seems to be very achievable. Right now, they're cleaning up, dressing up. We need some dry weather to put the striping on the streets, all the street lighting starting this week, so they're making good time on that, and I suspect that first week in November will be a happy day for many folks in Bossier City when that opens. Coleman Street, a couple of things have happened since last month. We expect the notice to proceed on this project to be issued by November. Been in conversation with AEP today regarding the staging of their relocation of the power lines to make sure everything's ready to go for them, and this will be a nice upgrade to this corridor, one for the high school, but also for the new hospital out there to kind of be in keeping with everything else that's going on down in that area. So, expect to start seeing some earth being moved in November, especially Track Co. was a little bitter on that.
Did you, did you ask them, just for, you know, principal, what, what end are they going to start on, if they're going to reroute buses and stuff?
We, we'll need to make sure that we coordinate all of that with the principal. I'll get with you, Councilman Williams, and we'll discuss that in detail. They'll have, they have a massive traffic control plan as part of that set of documents, and, you know, as with anything, those things are pretty dynamic once construction begins, but we'll make sure to.
Yeah, we talked yesterday a little bit about it.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me of that. The LPR camera project, it's hard to see, but that's one of the new LPR poles right there. We only have one left. It's pending DOTD approval. All the other poles and service drops are in, and the police department can begin mounting cameras. This is at the foot of the Texas Street Bridge. Max Bayou repairs, it's coming along nice.
It's good.
Y'all can probably see what's going on there. They're right on schedule, even with all the beautiful weather we've had, so we're excited to see that go in. That's a much-needed project, and Yorwicke's doing that, they're doing an excellent job. Public Works Generator Project, I'm told, will be complete Friday. They're still working out a few little Mickey Mouse things between this generator and the one at Animal Control, but that project is coming to a close, and they'll be done with that. This is the Animal Control Facility, starting to take shape. You've got the steel there on the left side of the building, doing a lot of interior work, a lot of moving bits and pieces out here. They're still a little behind schedule, but they've been making up time, so we're happy to see that. Tinsley Athletic Ball Field, huge project. Don't know if you've been back there, over $14 million of work. And every day, there's, there's a lot of fun happening out on that project site. We've been working with Parks and Rec closely, the contractor, the engineers, just to mitigate all of that. The biggest problem we're having out there is just the poor ground conditions and the fact that the vast majority of the project is all underground. So, it's, it's been, it's been a soap opera. We, we're looking to the day that we will have everything done below grade and be coming up. They're doing a lot of stuff above grade, too. The batting cages are in, fencing, things like that. Meadow View and Tinsley, Tinsley's still under construction, right around 76% complete, and Meadow View is, is done. So, you can kind of see both of those there, coming along really nice. East Bank Restrooms, if you've been out there, this is a little bit of an older picture. They've got some more color and flash on it now. They're on schedule, there'll be an issue on the agenda today to do a little change order to kind of freshen up the plaza area to match a little more closely with the restroom. Field of Dreams restroom, a little behind schedule predominantly from all of the rain and, and other things, but it's starting to, to take shape out there. Jogging Trail, this was an emergency project, it's complete. We've got a couple of punch list items out there, but that work is done. Just have a little dress-up to do in one of the areas, and one of the asphalt patches, we didn't like the finish on there, so we're having the contractor come back and clean that up. That one's done. Mike Woods Park, this was on there last month. Construction will begin on this soon, once all the parts and bits and pieces are delivered out there, and that'll fix this particular drainage issue that they've got going on. Carriage Oaks, this will probably be the last slide, but this project's done. The pipe was lined, y'all saw that last month, and you can see we, we had to basically re, I don't want to say rebuild, but reconstruct that whole guard shack there, but it's all good to go. The folks in that neighborhood are very happy that that project is complete. And then the private development, we talked about, various subdivisions. Kane's Landing probably being one of the biggest developments we have going down in South Bossier. Projects out to bid, we have the Melrose Drive Extension, we opened bids on that today. Highway 71 Lighting, that's currently in design. East Bank Fire Station in design, the Burn Building is under construction. Highway 71 Streetscape Improvements, we opened bids today. South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvements, those are in design. Stadium, we talked about some stadium seat repairs at the Century Link, that's done, and we're working with the Women's Veterans Memorial Group to complete the installation of that project. Couple just honorable mentions, flood management, we still need to meet with Ian Snellgrove on the Levy Board in Bossier Parish. That's been postponed due to the hurricanes and weather and everything else, but that's still on our radar to kind of get together and discuss the flood issues here in our area. Traffic Engineering, pending today's approval, will be initiating a study of Airline Corridor, Benton Road Corridor and 71 South. We recently learned that DOTD has a moratorium on all traffic counts because of COVID, so that's going to make things a little interesting at the start, but we're working with the various powers that be to get that moved forward. And then property standards, most of y'all know, those guys are busy all day, every day, taking care of every fence and tree limb and splay of grass, you name it. Any questions?
Questions from the council? Clinton?
I'm sorry. After the meeting, I got somebody calling, want to talk about something. I'll talk to you after the meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
If we could have Clinton come up and introduce himself, maybe. Get used to coming up in front of the mic.
Good afternoon, counsel, I appreciate this opportunity. I've been in the engineering field for about nine years now and very excited about the opportunity to serve Bossier City to the best of my abilities. And do you have any other questions or comments?
No, sir, we just appreciate you joining the team and look forward to working with you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next up, Mr. Justin Haydel with Man Shack on the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way, Phase 1 and 2.
Good afternoon, counsel, you've got my standard update, left it on your tables there. Again, the, the agenda kind of follows the schedule. I've got a commitment from the design team that they, they'll give me 100% drawings, not stamped, no later than October the 16th, and I scheduled a three-week review period for us to kind of pour over the drawings and, you know, the drawings are this thick, so it's easy to make minor errors that cause problems during bidding, so we want to try to eliminate some of those. We're going to turn our comments back over to the design team on or before November the 6th, and then on November, the, give them a couple of weeks to clean it up, and then they'll have to stamp and seal the drawings, and then we're going to pull everything together, including the front-end documents, the bid documents, and submit the plans and the contract documents to all of the permitting agencies, which there are many. Union Pacific Railroad, good news there, they approved the last submittal, and now we're preparing the final submittal to UP, which they say it should take only a couple of weeks for them to get it approved, so I'm hoping to make that final submittal to them no later than October 15th. Utility Relocations, we're making some headway there. If you look on the schedule, you can see all the different utility companies we're working with. SWEPCO have been making substantial progress on what they have to do, but they've kind of left town dealing with disaster zones due to Hurricane Laura and now Hurricane Sally, and they can't really tell us when their crews are coming back, so I'll just have to keep an eye on that. AT&amp;T, you know, they've committed to get everything done on or before February 17th. Center Point Energy, we've been working with them a lot over the last couple of weeks, and the last piece of paper in your hand out there is a drawing that shows what we have come up with for Center Point to put in a new gas line to continue servicing their customers. This has to be done prior to construction starting. It's only a two-inch gas line, so we've got it kind of going around the treatment plant. They're going to do the survey work and everything they need to do in order to develop the servitude documents, and then we'll bring that to the city council for approval, I guess is the process, right? So, one of the items with Center Point is they're showing a very long time to get their permit from the Levy Board. So, we're going to try to work with them to try to expedite that a little bit. They're got, they're going over the top of the levy, it's only a two-inch line, so they put in the standard timeframe that the Levy Board normally takes, which is six months, which I think we can get it done quicker than that. Conterra, they're out there working right now. Southern Link, the city attorney's office, Mr. Hall actually wrote them a letter to try to get things off-center, and lo and behold, as of yesterday, we've gotten some movement from them. They've actually got people coming to town, I think, next week to try to figure out what they need to do to get their stuff out of the way. Verizon, we're still kind of haggling with them a little bit. Anyway, the DOTD permits, of which there are seven of them, we have submitted six of the seven permit applications, and the last permit application, which is what they call a project permit at LA 3 and Walter O. Bigby, hopefully by the end of this week or early next week. So, they will have all of the permit applications. Don't know how long it will take them to turn those around, but regardless, you know, we've done what we can on our end. The Levy Board permit, which is a big one, things kind of, kind of got held up there a little bit, and I, you know, we blame it on whatever, COVID, but we couldn't get approval from the Corps to take the three additional soil borings I told you all about. I think Mr. Larkin helped out and got the Levy Board to agree to let us go ahead and proceed. They should be out there next week punching the holes, which is seepage analysis. They need that information to complete the seepage analysis that the Corps wants, so hopefully by the end of October, we'll submit that and get the show on the road with the Corps permit, so. Couple of other items here. The lighting design for the roadway, we met with the designer, Perlin Associates, y'all approved the contract for them to do the lighting for the roadway portion, kind of had a little kickoff meeting yesterday to get them started. And just to bring to your attention, there was a little sliver of land, additional property that was needed at the Green Acres Office Park, so we could have a proper radius turn off of Benton onto the dedicated street into Green Acres Office Park. So, Gordon's aware of it, David Volantine is working on the appraisal, so don't think that'll be a big issue. But anyway, that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Complicated.
It's, it's a lot of moving parts.
Looks good.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you for allowing me to do it.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right, unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. Final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing positions to be filled in the Bossier City Public Utilities Department as a result of a retirement and a resignation, and to increase the salary range of the vacant assistant superintendent position resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading.
Don't move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to fund improvements to the Sun City and Eagle Bend pump stations at a cost of $170,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund. Final reading.
Don't move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes on all taxable property within the limits of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the year 2020 and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. Final reading.
Don't move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? One thing I'd like, Ms. Fernandez, you had the foresight and ability to develop that historical data on this tax as well as all the others. Is there a way we could put that on our website?
Yes, sir, I'll do that. But just for the record, this actually rolls the taxes back.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm saying is so that there can't be any misconception or misconstrued ideas about what's going on in our philosophy. I would like that to be on the website for the record. That way, any of the media or anybody that wants to see how things have been handled since 1978, it's like I've always said and told Mr. Hall and Bob for a long time, that numbers don't lie. They tell the truth, so.
Yes, sir, we'll get that done.
Thank you. Do you want to ask if any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $500,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund to hire Atacopas Services, Inc., to clean and inspect portions of Bossier City's storm drainage systems, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the contract attached here too. Final reading.
Don't move.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $150,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund to hire Urban Systems, Inc., to prepare a traffic signal synchronization study for North Bossier City along Barksdale Boulevard, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the contract attached to year two. Final reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Once again, I think everybody knows why we're doing this. We want to assist in the movement of traffic, both in South Bossier and North Bossier, especially for those high peaks of time in the morning and in the evening. We, just to bring, give you a little more detail on the, with DOTD and the moratorium on traffic counts, that pertained to Phase Two. As you well know, the governor moved into Phase Three. So we're awaiting a decision from DOTD relative to the fact that they can proceed with traffic counts. So that came from the representative with this firm. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have an answer once this ordinance passes and the decisions made by the governing authorities. So.
Our fat fingers are hitting the wrong keys.
We're good to vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-25 Streetscape Improvements, US 71, Barksdale Boulevard.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate on this project is $1,600,000. It's funded from the 2019 sales tax capital budget. There are two addendums. The first addendum listed the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, revised the Louisiana form, PW bid form, provided changes to the specs and drawings. Addendum two, did pedestrian lighting prior to approvals? And that's it. First bid is from Ernest Contracting LLC. They acknowledged the addendums, bid bond is included. It's for $2,299,425. That's 2, 299,425. Is that the only bid? Ask that you, well, yeah, you can accept the reading to the bids, but we couldn't move forward with the project until more funds.
Take, move with approving the bid and take under advisement.
Yes, sir. I make.
You'll come back and tell us about it?
Yes, sir, I would have to, there's not enough money.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right, questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-23, Melrose Extension to Plantation Drive.
The engineer's estimate is $829,738 to come from the Riverboat Capital Projects. There was one addendum that provided the list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting and provided questions and answers. This bid is from Ernest Contracting LLC. The bid bond is included, they acknowledged the addendum. Same thing, please approve the reading of the bid and we'll be taking under advisement.
Make that motion.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-24, East Texas Industrial Drive Sewer Rehab Project.
The bid, the engineer's estimate is $1,214,000 from the sewer capital and contingency fund. There is one addendum that provided a list of attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, revised the Louisiana bid form, provided changes to the specs and questions and answers. There are three alternates. The first bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. He acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is $329,065. 327, I think I said it wrong, $327,065. 327,065. Alternate one is for $317,310. 317, 310. Alternate two is $519,125. 519, 125. And alternate three is for $67,025. 67025. The next bid is from Dixie Overland Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is $383,690. 383, 690. Alternate one is $539,463. 439, 463. Alternate two is $526,770. 526, 770. And alternate three is $94,442. 94, 442.
Stacy, I'm sorry, can you read alternate one back on that one?
On the Dixie Overland?
Yes, ma'am.
Alternate one is $539,463.
Okay, thank you.
The next bid is from Horseshoe Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is $315,711.50. 315, 711.50. Alternate one is $320,701. 320, 701. Alternate two is $283,685. 283, 685. And alternate three is $55,187. 55, 187. And the last bid is from Poly Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is for $401,180. 401, 180. Alternate one is $385,530. 385, 530. Alternate two is $442,352. 442, 352. And alternate three is $79,265. 79, 265. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2021. First reading.
Mr. President, I can make a motion, we combine items four through 22 from all the budgets.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We need to make a motion to, I can make a motion to introduce the 2021 operating and capital budgets.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. That brings us to item number 23 on the agenda. Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for donation to the Turkey Creek Police Department in accordance with law. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $22,880 from the Plantation Drive Waterline Project to reimburse Dr. J. Turner, the funds expended to extend an existing eight-inch water main to the east side of his property with a fire hydrant. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an active donation to accept a certain tract of land on Viking Drive owned by the Bossier Parish Police Jury. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to fund Gay Street Pump Bypass at a cost of $20,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance, amending ordinance, Chapter Six, Section Six-Dash-One, Number Twenty-Two of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to amend the description of the Festival Plaza region to enlarge the area included. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance, amending ordinance, Chapter Six, Section Six-Dash-One, Number Twenty-Two of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to amend the description of Festival Plaza region. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance approving the attached cooperative endeavor agreement by and among the Red River Waterway District, the city of Bossier City, and the city of Shreveport for the installation of a programmable LED light system on the Texas Street Bridge, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the same. First reading.
Don't move. Second.
Questions from the audience?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Does Bossier City will have any, be responsible for any maintenance or anything on that bridge at all?
There's a theoretical possibility of it. But, you know, the LED light systems have very low maintenance now. I mean, they last, both last a long time. And the IT department in Shreveport's going to handle the operation of the light. So, I mean, we have a responsibility on the agreement for maintenance, but I believe it to be minimal exposure that we have.
I got a question, Mr. Hall. On this agreement, we're accepting a million dollars from the Waterway as a contribution to this. But if during this 20-year agreement, something happens to this project and we shut it down, say halfway through, then we're going to be responsible for reimbursing the Waterway back for $50,000 a year on how many years are remaining on the agreement. How's that going to be split between Shreveport and Bossier?
Well, what we actually would owe them is we stop somewhere in the process is we owe them a million dollars back. But it takes off $50,000 a year that it's in operation. So whatever that reduces to, and it would be a 50/50 split between us and Shreveport.
Is that, I mean, I just don't really understand that 50/50 split as being, I mean, we're two different sized cities. We're both going to benefit from this. But the city of Bossier being responsible for the same amount that Shreveport is responsible, I'm not sure that that is a fair breakdown.
Well, I mean, it was given to the city of Bossier and the city of Shreveport, the million dollars was in equal proportion, you know. So it is the amount that's going to go towards the installation of the, Dr. Barkowski and his wife. and his wife had donated a million dollars for the purchase of the lights, and the million dollars from the Waterway Commission is for the design and installation of the, of the lights on the, on the deal. But I mean, obviously, the commission chose to give the million dollars to the city of Shreveport and the city of Bossier. So in theory, they would, I'm sure, expect either of us to be responsible for fifty percent of that. That's why they included Bossier in it.
I just don't see it as a equitable fifty-fifty on this. So.
Noted for the record. Any other discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby?
I voted, say, yay, I don't, I know what happened to my, there it is, okay.
Okay, thank you. Introducing ordinance, motion carries. Introducing ordinance to re-appropriate a hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars from ordinance seventy-three of 2020, the police building and public works complex lighting projects, to ordinance seventy-two of 2020, the Century Link Center lighting project. First reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience?
Mr. President, can I go back?
Yes, sir.
Can I go back on the last one?
Sure.
I mean, that is the first reading on it, so we have time to, right, look into with the, talk to the Waterway Commission and.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, to be.
I mean, what would be, what would be the reason to, I guess, a stop where they shut down or anything like that?
For it to be shut down? I don't think there is a reason. I mean, we, we put a force majeure clause in there and, and I've drafted a, a bunch of them and put them in contracts, but in this, this force majeure contracts act of God, it, it states, you know, for civil unrest, a reality that could happen. War, a reality that could happen. Pandemic, a reality that could happen. Epidemic could happen. So the, you know, there are clauses in there that, that allow us to delay. For one, it's a high-end lighting system that they've sought out. I mean, it's one of the best around, but it comes from China. So, you know, the, the concern is it may be longer period of time than what was originally projected. The project had to be done by the end of 2021. Well, obviously, we may have to go back to them and say, we, we, the date of completion has to be extended because the product won't be here. But I don't really think that there's a likelihood of it, of it being shut down. I mean, you know, I, I think a lot of people look at the lighting system that was on there before. It was old-school lighting. This is, this is state-of-the-art, and there, there are places in the country that have had LED lights, and they came to this system because it's, it's pretty prolific. And I think it's going to be a, a great draw to the city. I mean, I, I, it's got capable programmed lighting scenarios into it that are canned in it, but they can, they can light it.
Change the colors of.
Yeah, they could change the colors to purple and gold during the national championship game or LSU night. People can pay for that to raise money to offset the maintenance costs if, if there are any. So there's, there's ways that they thought of that could create sustainable monetary contributions. They've already raised some contributions towards that. So I, I think, I think the likelihood of it, of it failing is, after I talked to the people, I was very concerned when I first saw it, but after talking, Pam got together the people from Shreveport and we talked to them about how it's going to be handled. And I, I really believe it's going to be a, a benefit to the community and, you know, it'll be something that draws people here at, just in and of itself. But, but the, the main thing is, and we all know this, we, you know, look at all the projects we've done in the garage and at Century Link, and, you know, the difference in LED lights and the longevity of them and the lack of maintenance on them is way different than the lighting system that was on that bridge before.
You know, I talked to somebody today, and you, you know who it is, of course, that for the first five years, there's not going to be any, I mean, nobody's responsible for it. And after that, the, Shreveport, oh, golly, I can't think of the thing, the name of the, anyway, they're going to be responsible for all the maintenance, but they also can, like you said, raise money. If somebody has a baby and they want to do a gender reveal of the lights on the bridge or this or that, you know, the, the two teams playing the Independence Bowl, they can pay for that and raise money, but I wish I could think of them. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Shreveport Arts.
Heard they've got this stuff called Prevagen. A lot of bad. I did, it might work, I don't know. I haven't tried it yet, but.
Tell my wife that, she said the same thing. I'm done.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please. Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to conduct repairs to the Shed Road and Metta View Drive Gravity Maines at a cost of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to adopt the five-year capital projects plan. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Could I bring something up before?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I noticed the Airline Drive Underpass is still on there. Is that something where I've?
That's done, that's.
Did we appropriate that money?
Yes, we did. We, we did. We did a ten thousand dollar study with the same people that did it.
Well, we appropriated the ten thousand dollars, is what I meant to say. I apologize.
And we got the same result back as we did twenty years ago when we had it done.
What was that result?
Uh, can't do it.
Okay, then.
So we haven't appropriated the twelve million, the estimated cost or anything?
Twelve million?
Yeah. Well, I'd multiply that times ten based on what the carriage weighs costing, so.
Another waste of ten thousand dollars.
Well, Mayor, if you want to, you can, yeah, take that off. I don't think that's a viable project anymore, so.
Let's not let that come up again, okay?
What?
Do another study on it.
On this?
No, yeah, on the, of the Airline Drive project.
The underpass?
Yeah, let's do another study, okay?
I hope you're being sarcastic, otherwise I'm going to buy the.
Let's not let it happen to be it, okay?
Mr. Free, so would you like to add that to your motion with the, add deletion of the Airline Drive Underpass?
I would love to add that to my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Williams? Is that okay?
Second.
Thank you.
Second, yeah.
All right. Any questions from the audience regarding that amendment to the five-year capital projects plan? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We need a motion to, no?
No, I concluded it in the motion.
All right.
Public hearing for Bossier City's 2021 Consolidated Plan and CPG Action Plan for Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Afternoon, counsel.
Afternoon, Bob.
I am back again. Hadn't been that long since I was here on, on the last one, but this is the same type of a deal. We're an entitlement city, so we get a certain amount of money each year, and it's, it's based on the amount appropriated by Congress and then divided up by a formula in the law. And we don't know what we're going to get until they've done what they need to do, so. But we have a, we've come up with an annual action plan, which is what we need. It's a list of the projects that we'll have to spend the money when we do get it. And it's on that, that app, that plan I gave you there, the, the second page in there is the, the list of the projects, if you're interested in those. We have fifteen projects, well, sixteen projects actually this year that we'll be spending the money on.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, unless you want to go over the projects.
Thank you, Bob, as always. It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, is there any comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status under authority of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for public utilities. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved report of change order, first and final, for 2019 citywide concrete repairs, an increase of thirty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, total of contract with increase, one million, two hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve appointment of Kerry Landry to the Metropolitan Planning Commission Board of Adjustments as an alternate term effective September 22nd, 2020, and will expire September 21st, 2025.
Mr. President, Mr. Landry is here, if you'd like to say his word.
Oh, yes, sir. Now I recognize you.
Now you do. Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Kerry Landry, and I look forward to serving on the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Address for your, for the record, please, sir?
Two oh six Vermillion Place, seven eleven twelve.
Thank you for agreeing to that, Mr. Landry. We appreciate your service very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
I don't have a motion or a second yet, sir.
Well, I'm gonna make that motion.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution certifying off-system bridge program compliance for 2020 and 2021 for the Bossier City, for the city of Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it not come up?
Did.
Motion carries. Approved report of change order number one for the East Bank Restrooms Project with an increase of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars for a contract price with change order, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars, and adding an additional twenty-nine days to the contract time.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it come up, counsel?
No.
Try again.
Yeah.
Mr. Free, did yours come up? Mr. Williams?
It did.
Motion carries. Agenda items are due October 2nd for the next meeting, which will be October the 6th.
All righty. And also, Mayor, on behalf of the council, we'd, in two weeks, would like to make a special presentation to you and the fire chief and the police chief, if you could have him, them here at the beginning of the meeting. So, and that is in two weeks.
Yes, sir, it will be October 6th.
All right. So no further business. Everyone have a great week. Meeting adjourned.